I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. I always feel like I have to apologize because I see people squinting up there and doing this, but this room isn't finished yet, but someday it'll have some things up there to help with the light. But we're just a couple of minutes away from starting the meeting, and before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then I'll bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time you've given us. Thank you for this city. Thank you for each of these servants. Thank you for our residents who take time out to come to a meeting like this and to give us their comments and their input. God, we just ask that you guide us tonight, that we make decisions that are best for our community, and we trust you for that now in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. Let me again welcome you to this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. We do have large print agendas, if that's helpful to anyone. Who's got them? Do y'all see any? Are they down there, Kobe? Kobe's got some there, if that would be helpful to anyone. And now we'll proceed with asking the city clerk, call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Kevin Flores.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fujirus.
Here.
Ernest K.
Here.
All right. Thank you. We do have a full house tonight. This is, we're at item five on the agenda, and that is the agenda item that the council sets aside for each meeting to hear comments from our residents. If we have any of our residents that would like to address the council concerning something that's not already on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to go to the microphone at the podium. Please clearly state your name and address and keep your comments, try and keep your comments brief, and understand that we won't take action on anything tonight that you bring forward, but we'll take it under advisement. So is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that's not already on tonight's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, approval of minutes. Council, you've had access to the minutes now for a few days. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to look over those. If there are no additions or changes, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
We got two motions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item seven is procedural motions. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I'll move for A and B.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion of second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero.
All right. Thank you, and that brings us to item eight. This is an appeal regarding a decision made by the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit to allow camping at 1815 Bitter Lane. And I see Zach, is it the microphone? Is that presented by Zach Brothers? Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Zach Brothers, and this is my wife, Sarah. We live right here in downtown Springdale. Over the past 20 years, we've been investing in Springdale in many ways, including real estate ventures. Recently, we've entered a phase in our life where we're looking for investments that we find enjoyable and also that can help enhance and improve our hometown. I feel like this project has that potential, and that's why I'm asking the council to approve a conditional use permit to allow camping on my land on Fitzgerald Mountain. My revised plan is quite different from what was turned down by the Planning Commission. It consists of two camper van spots and three campsites with 20 people max. I'm planning one community fire pit, and I've had a conversation with the fire marshal, and he approved of my plan. I've been able to talk to several of you about the project, and it has been suggested I make sure to include certain content in my presentation, so let me take a couple of minutes to do that. If you've ever walked or ridden the Fitzgerald Mountain Trails, you've surely seen the beauty we have on our mountain. If you haven't seen it, I have some photos I'd like to share to give you a visual of the subject property, and they're right there by Kevin. Thank you, Kevin, for passing those down. You'll see, on these photos, you'll see two views from the Butterfield Trail. One is a north-facing view as you enter my property. One is a south-facing view as you enter my property. The other two photos show the lower portion of the property. The field with the Fitzgerald Mountain Camp sign is adjacent to Bitter Lane. Bitter Lane runs on the north side of the property and terminates on the property. The GOAT Trail links the camper van spots to Butterfield Trail and the campsites, and I hope you'll be able to see some of the beauty of the landscape in these photos. Oz Trails and the Northwest Arkansas Trailblazers have developed some world-class trails across Northwest Arkansas. I've spoken to the executive director of the Trailblazers, and he's written a letter of support for camping. He says we have nearly 400 miles of world-class trails and only a handful of camping spots adjacent to those trails, which isn't enough. He said they get tired of having to tell people that the closest camping is all the way out at Beaver Lake. I also have a letter of support from the senior advisor at Walton Enterprises, Buddy Philpot. Buddy says he's amazed at the economic impact the bike trails are having on our region, and says that projects like Fitzgerald Mountain Camp will continue to fuel economic growth in our region. One example of that economic growth fits right in with what I'm proposing. A local businessman is about to launch an online platform that caters to camp areas like mine. His app will serve as a booking service and will also allow upgrades, including setting up glamping tents and delivering rental bikes. I've already discussed my project with him, and he thinks he could keep my site booked up. There is a local precedent for a camp area like this that is in city limits, is adjacent to mountain bike trails, and adjacent to a residential area. It's Kohler Mountain Bike Preserve Campground in Bentonville. I'd like to quote an article from the Democrat Gazette about camping at Kohler. Quote, "The visit Bentonville president said camping has been the missing link. The city has hotels and Airbnb rentals, but camping right next to the trails allows mountain bikers a more convenient access to the trails." End quote. The Kohler area actually has a lot of similarities to my plan. It has camper van spots and campsites, they do online bookings only, and they have a community fire pit. The distance from Kohler Camp to the Bentonville Square and from Fitzgerald Camp to Shiloh Square is very similar, and for Fitzgerald, there is a planned trail that will provide a direct connection to downtown Springdale. This is an important piece because once that trail is complete, I know there will be bikers who will enjoy riding the short distance from the camp area to our downtown to spend money at our local businesses. I'd like to close with this. This is a project I have chosen to pursue because I want to create something positive for the area. It will provide an outlet for people to get out under the stars and breathe some fresh air. It will be a place where people will have an opportunity to camp and have ride-in, ride-out access to our world-class trails. I plan to start small, so I can both test the market and the business operation, and if there is demand, I could eventually make improvements that could include upgrades, such as a restroom facility, glamping tents, and maybe even small cabins. With world-class mountain bike trails and a paved greenway that connects the cities of Northwest Arkansas, these types of projects are coming, and I think we should want them to. Recreational outdoor opportunities in a growing community are necessary for a healthy and happy community. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you'll support my plan. I do have a site plan map with some information on zoning and distances and articles for reference, if you'd like to see them.
Can you, I heard, I wanted to be sure I heard you right, but you used the term twice, so I think I heard it right, and I think I know what it means, but what's glamping?
So glamping is getting really popular. This was actually, can you see this from the Arkansas Living magazine? Glamping tents are, they're fancy tents with a heavier material. People can get as fancy as they want with them. They can put carpet down and bedding and all kinds of stuff, chandeliers if they want to, or you can just set up a nice tent and then have people bring in what they want. But this is getting popular in our area, and that local company that I was talking about will actually come in and set up a glamping service for you, or I could decide to set them up myself.
Hey Zach, would you go over those differences between what you're proposing now and what was presented to the Planning Commission a little bit better?
Absolutely. So I would say that the biggest mistake that I made with the Planning Commission was I put a number out there that sounded way too high. I said it could have a max of 84 people. I shouldn't have ever said that. I really didn't ever plan on that much, but at the time, I had a group camp area where I had several, I was going to allow several tents, and my max number per reservation, I was going to have them allow up to six people, and I've changed that to four per reservation. The biggest deal is that I had a group camp area, several sites, and now I've whittled it down, no group camp area, only three campsites, and two van camper spots. Oh, there was definitely some concern about fire, and I've whittled it down to just one group camp fire area.
What was it before?
I was going to allow fire pits at each campsite.
Each campsite. And now just one?
Now, just one, and I talked to Fire Marshal Blake Holt about that. What I'm planning to do, it's fairly close to where I have a metal barn, and I'm planning to, I'll have signage up there to where the people can do a quick check to see if there happens to be a fire ban. Chief Holt said we didn't have any fire bans this past year, FYI, but they can do a quick check. There'll be a fire extinguisher in the barn, and there'll be a sign directing people in there, and I'm looking into getting a rain, because I don't have water up there right now, but getting a rain barrel system that'll gather rain off the roof into the rain barrel, and I can have a hose coming out the bottom of it.
How does, how does the parking work?
So Bitter Lane terminates right on my property, and I have two spots that are under this nice tree that are designated for the camper vans. Just south of Bitter Lane, which is all on my property there, I plan to have six parking spots for the, six max for the other campers.
So that's plenty?
With three sites planned, six spots would allow two vehicles per spot.
And is that a paved parking, or?
No, the, well, the van camper parking is a gravel area. The other area is just off of the paved Bitter Lane, but it is not paved.
Ernest, I got a procedural question here. This is on appeal. It could be modified, the appeal to this extent?
It is. It's a, since it's a conditional use, you can place conditions, you could deny the concept altogether, or you could place, approve it with certain conditions.
And Patsy, you may know something about this. Is there any future development that we know of going on around there?
I have a question. What are your plans for sanitation for these campers?
So I'm planning to use a booking platform called Hip Camp, and I've talked to someone extensively there who says that in these types of primitive camp areas, the campers are used to packing out their trash. So that's what I was going to start with. However, I will, if that is an issue, I won't hesitate to place a dumpster there and start a trash service.
I'm talking about sanitation.
Restrooms?
Yes.
Okay. So on my booking site, I can put whatever I want. I plan to direct people to the Biari Park Restrooms, which is a quarter mile away.
That's longer than a quarter mile away, but go to an elementary school for a restroom? That doesn't make good sense to me. Looks like you should, I've never seen a campsite that did not have restroom facilities, whether it's porta potties or what.
You're bringing up a great question, Mike. It's, Biari Park has a, it's, there's a, it's a park facility. There are nice restrooms there. That's where I'll, since I can write up my booking, I can direct people towards that. Now, I understand that there could be other issues. When it gets dark, people won't want to go down the trails to that area, so I plan to have an outhouse area where there will be a portable toilet system in there.
Well, we've had problems with vandalism in open restrooms before in our park areas. It's been significant, so I'd feel much more comfortable if you had some method for sanitation on-site.
Well, I definitely, I will have this outhouse area, and that's where I, I'm assuming the people that after dark, that that's what they will use.
By an outhouse, you mean an outhouse, or you mean a porta potty?
Well, a porta potty is the third option, a porta potty service. I can start that if my first two options aren't working well. What I mean by the outhouse is it's a, it's a private, it's a private outhouse that has a portable toilet in it.
So I went out there and drove up there today, and basically at the end of the road, I think one of those pictures was the, where it said something about Goat Trail or something like that. Is that, is that still your property?
That is my property.
So that Goat Trail up to the trail is across your property?
That is on my property, yes.
But that's not where camping would be?
No, if you pulled all the way up and saw the Goat Trail sign.
Right.
That's where the van campers will park.
Because it seemed like that was kind of like a little turnaround area up there. I was wondering if that's where people were going to park, but that'd be where the vans would be?
Those, that's the, there's gravel in that area, and that's where the van campers will park. That trail is one that I developed, and it goes, I think it's about 100 yards up to the main camp area, where the campsites will be up adjacent to the Butterfield Trail.
Oh, okay. So it's even farther up the Goat Trail?
The campsites are.
The campsites are.
The campsites are.
I have a quick question for Patsy. Is there a site plan that goes with a conditional use like this or not?
Yes, if you've got one.
Can we pass it around?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep, I got it.
Under our current ordinance, when we park something, when we park an RV, when we park something in the grass or on gravel, what's the rules behind that? What kind of things are we giving up on this?
Well, this is an agriculturally zoned piece of property.
Okay.
Okay, and part of his condition would be whether or not he could have the gravel parking areas or not there.
Okay.
Okay? Because that, we can set that up as part of the conditions for this. When you get to another, another level, it may have to be paved, but at this point, he's asking for those to be gravel as part of the conditional use itself, too. Yes.
How many?
And remember, it's a conditional use. If it doesn't work, we have the ability to come back and look at it and talk about whatever, what else needs to be done.
What triggers that?
Anybody can trigger it. Anybody who is concerned about it as an adjacent property owner, a Planning Commission member, anybody can come in and say, "We have concerns about that conditional use," and the Planning Commission will hold a hearing to discuss that conditional use at that time. Okay?
So Zach, I have a couple of questions for you. Do you know how far the closest fire hydrant is to there?
I do not.
And secondly, would you consider for an approval to go ahead and do the porta potties there? And I don't care how you build it, you know, build around it, but would that be a consideration that you would do to get the approval now?
Absolutely. If that's what it takes to get an approval, sure. I've already, I've already checked into porta potty services.
And they, they would have no problem getting it up to your property?
I'd have to locate, I'd have to locate it in an area somewhere along Bitter Lane where they could access it.
Okay.
And I would do that. I would, I would just make sure I found a flat spot right there.
From a, from a business standpoint, you've looked at these around, we've got some fairly close locally, at least in the, in the region. Is the porta potty, I can, I can make an argument that I might not want porta potties there if it, you know, but, but, because if I'm camping in that type of situation, I know what to bring, I know what to expect, I know what I'm, you know, I know what I'm doing. So is the, is the porta potty, is that, is that an option that we see a lot, or does it detract, or does it add the value to, to?
I think.
To someone coming, using your spot?
That's a great question. I think it could go either way. I talked to someone who said they might think it would detract because it might be a magnet for people who weren't supposed to be there. They may try to come use it, which is why my first options were to, I think during daylight hours with Biari facilities being so close, I think that's a fantastic option. That's one of the things that I really liked about this property, how close it is to those nice restrooms. But the second option being the outhouse with the portable toilet, my contact person at Hip Camp, they said that the people that will come to these types of sites are used to it, and when they read the rules, it's like if you go to an Airbnb, you have to read the rules and you have to agree to those rules. So the people that book will have to agree to the rules that I set, and they will read my information about toilets so that they will, they will know that there is one option at Biari Park, and then the second option would be the outhouse option that I'm planning on creating with the portable toilet.
So part of this conditional use is going to be you have to book it through Hip Camp or a similar app, correct?
Well, that's a great question, Kevin. If it, if it, my plan going into it was that I had researched Hip Camp, and I really liked them. The newest one that I've talked to, Stuart Collier is a businessman in Fayetteville who's developed an app called Explore Eden, and his is going to be similar to Hip Camp, but it'll have upgrades where you can, they can bring in the glamping setups, and they can bring, they're partnering with a company called Bike.co where they can, they can deliver rental bikes. So I might want to go with the local guy.
Well, and I don't want to say I, I would require you, or we would require you to do Hip Camp only, but a similar app, and I say that because the mayor brought up a point of having a porta potty out there. I think that's sort of an attraction to, you know, I've hiked out there, I've ran out there, and it's going to bring, in my opinion, it could bring people that aren't on your campsite already. So if you do it through one of these apps, I think it'll be, it could be clear enough to where the users, your tenants would know what to do, and I don't think it'd be necessary to, you know, someone like me is not going to go use Hip Camp. You know, it's going to be someone that is already into this type of sport and this type of activity, and they're used to these restrictions. So I don't, I don't know if a porta potty is necessary for these type of campers. But, I mean, I do, I do think a minimum an outhouse of sorts is necessary.
From what I understand, a lot of folks that go to these camp areas, they're, they're fine with that. They could go use a portable toilet in an outhouse, and they're, they're fine with it. They're used to it. If they aren't fine with it, they won't be booking these sites.
Zach, on enforcement of your rules, can you go over why you plan on, how often you're going to go up there, who's going to be over it? Because, you know, the property owners next door, I feel like they would require somebody to come up there and take care of it.
Absolutely, and I've talked to those property owners, and they, they had concerns, and rightly so. And when I, when I told them what my plan was, they did not oppose me. But to better answer your question, my plan is, first of all, this is, this is a new thing for me as well, so I want to, that's why I want to test the operation on a, on a small scale. But they have to agree to the rules, they do everything through the app, but then when they get there, and they'll know this, but there's also a sign that says the check-in procedures require you to get out a tag that I'll have there, write their name and reservation, and they'll post that tag at their spot. Each spot has a post designating the spot and then a clip. So when I drive out there to check on this, it'll be easy for me to drive or walk to the areas where I need to and talk to the people and also check for their tag. They also will leave, on the app, they also leave feedback for me, so if, if they show up and something is amiss, they leave bad feedback, and I don't want that. That wouldn't be a good business.
I'm thinking worst-case scenario in my head, you know, if you need to kick somebody out, you know, you going to go in there daily, weekly, every three days? How often?
Well, initially, I'll drive through every time that there's a reservation so that I can check on it. If, then if I, if a reservation goes by and I don't happen to go out there and it goes okay, I might not need to do that all the time. I can tell you this, though, if, if it gets to be to where it, it isn't working with that setup, it's, it's really easy to stop. I just have to make them unavailable through the app, or I could decide, hey, I only want to deal with one of these, it's too much, I only leave one available. So in my mind, I think it's just like our Airbnb that we run. If we decide we want a break, we just mark it off the calendar and we get a break.
Zach, do you have a maximum time for people to reserve a spot?
That's a great question. I have not come up with that yet, but if that's something that I, that I need to do, I will. Do you have any suggestions on that? Because I don't, that's a great question, because I don't want people to go.
If maybe some of these other sites, if you've seen or seen what they do, if they have a maximum time limit for?
I, I have researched it, but I haven't come across that yet, and that's, that is something that I will put into place because I have the same concern that you do, that I don't want anybody to move in out there. So whether it's three days, five days, if somebody is going for a week, seven days, it will be something appropriate.
Zach, I hate to keep asking questions about traffic, but on these vans, you said there's two spots, right?
Yes, sir.
And is the van, is that these large vans that I guess people are taking their bikes around the country in?
I like to use.
How do we know it's not going to be an RV, for instance?
Well, I like to use the term camper van because that's what we see driving around with these fancy bikes, and that's what I anticipate going in.
That's what you're hoping it's going to be, but how do you make sure that's what it is?
Well, I guess to me, it doesn't matter if it's a van or a small camper, if it's 30 feet or less, which is, which is what I've put in there, so that they have the ability...
And what about trailers?
No trailers.
Is that a requirement?
I'll put that, I'll write that in as one of the rules.
Any more questions for Zach right now? Want to open it up and go ahead and hear from anyone else? Sir, you're standing there. I didn't know if you wanted to say anything.
Moral support.
Okay.
I'll answer any questions, but I'm going to.
Be happy to, anyone who would like to speak to this issue, feel free to go to the microphone, and we'll just.
Hi, I'm Ramona Latham, and I live at 1840 Dodd Avenue. I am, my, I guess northern border is Zach's southern border, so part of it. I'm one of the neighbors of the south border. Yeah, pardon me, I'm not a, you know, I don't speak, so I'm nervous.
You're fine.
So I'm going to read a little bit I wrote, and so, and it's, and it's interesting because some of the things that Zach said tonight is a little bit different than what was in his appeal letter that we received. Regarding Zach Brothers' appeal for conditional permit for primitive campground at 1815 Bitter Lane, I would like to submit my family's as well as most of my neighbors' objections. A lot of them couldn't be here tonight. I have a 90-year-old neighbor who lives to my west, and his wife, and they're both, she's 88, he's 90, and she wasn't feeling good today, but she wanted to be here. And then the neighbor to my east, her son came down with a fever today, so she can't be here. So, and our neighbors across the street can't be here either. I commend Mr. Brothers and his family's entrepreneurial spirit investments for Springdale. I'm sure it has led his family to great financial success. I could tell you all about how I raised my family at 1840 Dodd Avenue for the last 20 years and seen all the changes and challenges, but that's not the point of our objection to Mr. Brothers' primitive campground, quote, "business," being put in mine and my neighbor's backyard. Last month, on September 7th, at the Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Brothers' primitive campground was denied by more than a majority of votes. One commissioner even said that Mr. Brothers' idea was a good idea, but the wrong place. 20 years ago, all our properties were zoned agricultural, but later it was changed to SF2. We found this out a couple of years after we moved in, and we approached the city for a business license for my husband's self-employment. We were denied. We were told it was because our property was zoned SF2, and we would need to rent a building in a commercially zoned area. building in a commercially zoned area. And we could not rent a business out of our home. When we explained it was only to store a few items in buildings that were already on our property and there wouldn't be any customers coming to our home, we were given the same answer, no businesses on our SF2 property. Mr. Brothers admits his property, at least he did in the last meeting, his property was bought and in the letter, that it was zoned SF2 as well as ours. And though his northern neighbors', quote, "goat farm," is located across the street, partially borders some of Mr. Brothers' property, it is, it is zoned agricultural and it's not in Washington County, it's in Benton County. Last year, in two thousand and twenty, during the beginning of a COVID outbreak, we had to replace a failing old septic system with one that was modern and up to code. We spent thousands of dollars and were required by the city to get permits, have our land surveyed for the proper slope, for the, for the drainage because of the required bleach field lines to, and to install proper cleanouts. Our new system was required to be big enough for the square footage of our home as well as how many occupants were in our home. We then had to repair the damage done from digging up our yard and removing many trees to fulfill the requirements of the city's laws and zoning. Mr. Brothers, winning a bid for the property at eighteen fifteen Bitter Lane, sold by the Springdale School District in an auction, knew that the property was zoned SF2, but in his desire to use his property for a primitive campground, providing no amenities, wants his neighbors to be accepting of having customers coming and going at different times of the day and night, all while using a bucket with a toilet seat cover to do their bathroom business. And his hope is that they will carry it out or bury it. Where is the septic system requirement for his property to handle the twenty-plus campers per day that he is, that he's actually reduced in his appeal from what he hopes that someday in the future will be eighty-four campers per day? It is a great responsibility with one on the campground to supervise it. People, whether they are campers or people who have stumbled upon the campground without permission, may dump their sewage or trash wherever they feel necessary, including on my property, on our, and my neighbor's properties. Also, campers, bikers and hikers using Mr. Brothers' property could be curious about the wooded areas, my property again, and many, and may wander into our private, private property making paths that do not belong there. I have checked on the primitive camping areas in northwest Arkansas and most are, and most are quite a distance from residential areas located on state or natural lands, national lands or in private property that the occupants themselves live and monitor. Mr. Brothers is correct. There is a tree line between the large, large power line he's meant that runs east and west on his southern neighbor's properties and as of yet, none of us has built a dwelling there. But that property is still ours and if we or our loved ones or someone we decide to sell to wants to build, to build there, having a primitive, primitive campground with no amenities and a bucket for a toilet will dissuade most from wanting to do so. This primitive campground will bring our property values down. This campground and trail system will not be like the state-of-the-art Kohler campground that Mr. Brothers speaks of being built in a residential area. The Kohler campground that Mr. Brothers speaks of cannot even begin to be compared to Mr. Brothers' primitive campground and the Fitzgerald Trail. It's just not possible. The Kohler campground is gated, no one other than the campers themselves or the employees of Kohler can enter it unless they have a code for the gate. The Kohler Mountain Bike Trails System and Campground is under the Peel Foundation and they have spent millions of dollars to build a state-of-the-art system with paved walking trails and bike trails that intertwine with one another. There are many bridges over a year-round meandering stream, a bathroom and showers facility for the campground, as well as two other sets of bathrooms, a coffee shop, a pavilion for picnicking, event areas and more amenities. And as far as the northwest Arkansas's claim to being the mountain bike capital of the world, a quick Google search will show you that that's a self-proclaimed title. The concern we have for fires, whether it be five individual campfires designated for each camping spot or one group campfire, it is the same. Unattended campfires start most of the out-of-control forest fires in America. Being born and living in Ameri-, or in California until twenty-one years ago, I understand the threat of out-of-control fires in areas where people live, in residential forested areas. In fact, we lived near the Oakland Hills Firestorm as it raged through the very populated urban wildland, destroying over thirty-four hundred homes, killing twenty-five people and injuring more than a hundred and fifty people. And last year, sorry, and last year, my sister-in-law and her granddaughter both lost their homes in a highly enforced, code-restricted residential forested area, along with many other people not only lost their homes but their lives. So forest fires are a legitimate concern, especially when the fire pits are in, under and around the, and dry brush. It is with great respect for this council that I ask you to uphold the Planning Commission's vote against Mr. Brothers' primitive campground business being established on this residential zone property. And I appreciate it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Can I go? All right. Hello, my name is Janet Haley. My husband and I live at twenty-five hundred Dodd Avenue. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I was born in Springdale and except for the college days, have lived here my whole life. My husband Chuck and his brother James, boyhood home was on Fitzgerald Mountain, very close to the property on this agenda. They know Fitzgerald Mountain like the back of their hand. They left their boyhood home for college, got married, had children, and both brothers eventually built their own homes on Fitzgerald Mountain in nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and nine respectively, because of its beauty and appeal. James and Tracy's home is twenty-seven hundred Dodd Avenue. So both brothers, along with our families, do have a very personal interest in the decisions impacting our property as well as the beautiful mountain itself. The Haley families relinquished a portion of our property to assist the trail system and are a hundred percent behind and in support of the Walton Foundation, who so graciously paid for most of the land. The Walton Foundation hired NWA Trailblazers to design and build the beautiful trail system, then donated the land they purchased and the trail system to the city of Springdale. We have just a few comments. With regard to the letters from Mr. Phil Pot and Mr. Rushing that was included with the appeal, we understand why these gentlemen would support camping, but don't think the specifics of the campground were divulged to either party. Everyone in this room has probably seen one or more of the projects funded by the Walton Foundation. I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure the Walton Foundation would not support nor would condone a campground inside of their trail system that did not include the proper facilities that would complement the existing Fitzgerald Mountain project. Both Haley families, James more than mine, have had many communications with Mr. Rushing, with NWA Trailblazers, especially during the construction of the, of the, um, trail. And he was very professional and he worked hard to listen to our concerns and implement signs and barriers to help us maintain, um, property boundaries and our privacy. When we contacted Mr. Rushing late summer before the Planning Commission meeting about the campground, he did say he was for more camping in, near the trail areas. But he said those that he implemented or he was familiar with all had restroom facilities with flush toilets. If both parties, Mr. Phil Pot and Mr. Rushing, had full knowledge of the primitive nature of the campground, Mr. Phil Pot lives over in Harbor Meadows and Mr. Rushing lives in Bentonville, so it really doesn't personally affect either them or their property. Number two, we really don't understand his request getting denied at the Planning Commission and then changing a few parameters and skip to the city council for approval. Mr. Brothers was asked at the Planning Commission if he wanted to revise the scope and he declined. Number three, after, after the Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Brothers did come out into the hallway and where the neighborhood group was gathered and he asked us if, if it would make any difference if he changed the scope to two campsites. We responded with an adamant no. I'm not sure what his productive discussion was referring to, maybe the fact that several of us took his cell phone number and told him we would give him a call and had his back should we see suspicious activity on his property when we hike the trails. Number four, why do we need a primitive campground within fifty feet of a city street? This trail, in our opinion, is a day excursion destination. We've hiked the trails and these can be completed in a few hours, especially on a bicycle. Typically, primitive campgrounds are found in very rural, secluded and remote areas where a destination from A to C is too far to reach in a single day and therefore you need a waypoint B to sleep before reaching creature comforts, henceforth the need for a primitive campground. This is not necessary in the city limits of Springdale. Mr. Brothers mentions bicyclists camping up in Bentonville and Bella Vista wanting something closer to Fitzgerald Trails. Hickory Creek Campground is listed both on the Oz Trail and HipCamp websites and is just eleven minutes away via car. That campground, open most of the year, includes flush toilets, showers, electricity, campsite fires and the very important dump station for RVs needing to clear their gray and black tanks before travel. Neighborhood concerns. I am speaking for myself, along with my husband Chuck, James and Tracy Haley, Ramona and Steve, Melissa and Calvin, Jeff and Linda, Shirley and Dean and Lois, with regards to this conditional land, land use appeal that was denied by the Planning Commission on September seventh. I have a petition with their signatures on it and their addresses, asking for your denial. I'm not saying last names and addresses listed on this petition out of respect to their privacy. You can keep this if you want. We continue to have several concerns with the primitive campground. When listing these concerns, please keep in mind that his property is in the city limits of Springdale and should conform to city standards, zoning parameters, rules, regulations and codes. This proposed campground is primitive, no water, potable or being potable or natural resource, therefore no sewer, no dump station for RVs and no restrooms. The small mountain stream he speaks of in his appeal is related to runoff for a brief amount of time after an extended rainstorm. The campground offers no electric service, therefore RV generators may be running day and night. Our primary concerns are, number one, the restroom facilities. All outdoor public recreational areas that are in Springdale, parks, playgrounds, Razorback Greenway, have a permanent restroom facility with sinks and flush toilets. This proposed campground would be our neighbor. All our neighbors have toilets with septic systems or are hooked up to city sewer. Mr. Brothers is counting on the Biore Park restroom as his main restroom facility and a picture of it in its distance is even posted on his website. He states the restroom is, as being one quarter mile away. This statement is not correct. The one more, the one quarter mile distance marker he refers to is the distance from the trailhead Dodd Avenue to the edge of his property. Actually, it is a minimum one half mile one way from the closest camping site, taking the shortest trail route north and south of Dodd to the restroom at Biore Park. It's longer than that if the campsite is closer to Bitter Lane or the wrong guest is made at the T intersection on the south side of Dodd. So to get to the restroom, one has to leave the campground property, travel at least one quarter mile via unlighted, single-track trail, cross between residential properties, cross Dodd Avenue, then go another one quarter mile, the unlighted, single-track trail. We think most campers who wake up in the middle of the night with a, oh boy, I gotta go, feeling will never make the one mile plus journey after stumbling along the trail twenty feet beyond their campsite and will find the nearest tree to relieve themselves either on or off campground property. It seems a little inappropriate to have a business with revenue coming in from people camping, yet the city of Springdale is furnishing the restroom facilities, including water, paper towels, toilet tissue, electricity and of course, the cleaning and maintenance of that facility. Mr. Brothers' backup is a bucket with a plastic bag. Really? A latrine on the campground in the city limits of Springdale? How many people are going to forget to pack it out their body waste? Who can he be held responsible when there is more than one camping party with a possibility of twenty people? Who wants to sit on a bucket that has probably already been used, has flies and bugs crawling around it and smells like you know what? We don't want, nor do we want other guests to be hiking along Fitzgerald Trail and see a roll of toilet paper hanging on a tree limb with a pile of toilet paper along with excrement at the base of a tree. Whoops, somebody forgot to pack it out. Portable toilets, that are also suggested, are typically used as a temporary facility for construction sites or one-time-only event venues that have large crowds. Portable toilets are visibly objectionable, smelly and draw flies. Number two, zoning. The property that Zach purchased is zoned SF2, which is low to medium, single-family residential. Residential indicates homes in accordance with Springdale codes. We don't see a primitive campground with up to twenty camping at one time as a good fit with the SF2 zone. Also, the design of the campground itself is a bit awkward for trail users in that there are campsites on either side of the trail. So the trail, in other words, runs right through the middle of the campground. So it just seems a little bit awkward. Uh, fire concern. There is a fire hydrant on O'Wire Road across the street or right at the Bitter Lane intersection, but across the street west. So it's, um, an eighth of a mile, a quarter mile away, something like that. Fire concern. The Haley families and neighbors empathize with Ramona and Steve with regards to their personal fire-related history. Ours is a little bit different in that, um, and I'll explain it in a minute. As of October ninth PM, there were three firings on the wooded camping area on his property. We were so concerned about the fire issue that several members of the fire department graciously agreed to meet with us at our home and hiked part of the trail system, get eyes on and listen to our concerns. We came away from that meeting with a great deal of respect and gratitude to the city of Springdale Fire Department for their professionalism, expertise, experience and knowledge of fire behavior. Failure is not even in Springdale Fire Department's vocabulary. Chuck's Jane, Chuck, James and I personally feel that the Springdale Fire Department, along with both local, regional personnel and assets, would be able to keep the fire from taking our lives and our homes. I'm just speaking for Jim and Chuck and Tracy and myself. The foremost cost, if a fire got out of hand, would be of course, the risk to this, to the safety of our firefighters in getting the fire under control. A secondary cost, if the fire entered the wooded area, would be a, a, a ugly, long-term black scar on the mountain and trail system, along with necessary clearing of wooded area on the trail that the firefighters might need to pursue to generate a fire break. Let's keep this a day-use-only destination, therefore campfires would not be needed. Concerns about lack of supervision, liability issues, transience. On Zach's appeal, he mentioned a host onboarding manager. He didn't speak of that tonight with you, you guys. But he says, the host onboarding manager Mr. Brothers refers to may be around at times when registered guests are booked on the calendar, but what about those that just show up? What about bicyclists and hikers that see the latrine and don't think it relates to them because they aren't really camping? Existing lighting is solar-powered and minimal at the camping area. We don't believe it will deter transients or other nefarious activity, especially during off-season. One of our neighbors, a parent with three small children whose husband's career takes him away from home, has had frequent trespassers, trespassers from the trail system. This incident may not be so alarming during the day, but it is extremely terrifying after dark. Another neighbor is concerned, is concerned about campers trying to traverse the trail at night, getting off the trail, stumbling, falling, and injuring themselves on their property. These incidents could easily happen with someone trying to find the way to Bayori Park restroom after dark. During the daylight hours, it's easy, easy to see the rocks, tree roots, turns in the trail. At night, visibility is limited. Also, the scenic, the scenic old metal barn on his property looks condemnable. One fireman said he didn't want to go into the barn and suggested we contact code enforcement. Okay, the Kohler Mountain Bike Preserve. Ramona is spot-on with her assessment of the Kohler. We visited there also, and I'll just add a couple of comments to what she had to say. That camping does include hot showers, wooden tent platforms for level, dry sleeping, bike wash and repair stations, tables, and a full-time staff. Kohler Campground is obviously a well-designed and planned area. It complements and is in harmony with the larger Kohler Mountain Bike Preserve. The primitive campground Mr. Brothers proposed has none of the Kohler amenities. His proposed campground is out of tune and not a good fit with the Fitzgerald Trail system. Property values. We believe a primitive campground adjacent to our properties will result in, in our properties being diminished in value and less marketable. We take offense and disagree with Mr. Brothers' statement about the northern neighbors being the only ones who have a dwelling in the vicinity of the campground. We are here tonight because our vicinity and our, because of our vicinity and are very sensitive to requests outside Springdale city standards. Change of scope. Mr. Brothers has reduced his campground's scope. However, it's the same. There's, the lack of infrastructure is just not there. There's no water, no sewer, no electric, no dump receptacles for RVs. The fire danger remains. He has no full-time staff on site. In conclusion, this request for use of property that an existing public trail runs through should be in symphony and complement the Fitzgerald Trail system. We think his request would have a negative impact to adjacent property owners, Fitzgerald Trail, and the city of Springdale. We have the highest regards for the experienced individuals on the Springdale Planning Commission and concur in their correct decision of denying his request. Once the door is opened for a primitive campground with no water, restrooms, no electricity when the city, within the city limits of Springdale, others could follow, we ask that you would please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody else? Comment? It's not, it's to the council. You'll still get an opportunity to comment if you need to.
I have a question of Patsy. Couple of questions, actually, I'm sorry. So, now they're saying SF2. I thought somewhere along the line, something was said about agriculture.
That was, that was my mistake. This property is on SF2.
Okay.
Is a conditional use because it is a use unit four, which is allowed as a conditional use in an SF2, which is cultural, recreational, and health facilities. Campground is listed as a recreational facility as a use unit four.
Okay. And then also, typically, when you bring to us a conditional use, you have a whole list of conditions, right?
Correct, yes.
I assume, had this been approved, that's kind of what you would have brought to us this time. However, now, we've got a situation where everything's, or not everything, as she said, a few things have been changed.
Right.
Are those things written down somewhere, or what? So, how do we, how do we formalize that?
Well, normally, what we would do would be come back to this. If, if you agree to overturn the Planning Commission's decision for it to be a conditional use, then we would come back to the next meeting with a resolution that lists the conditions that we outline, or whatever conditions you want to put in it.
So, would it go back to the Planning Commission?
Doesn't have to go back to the Planning Commission. It just comes back to you guys, like we do when we overturn a rezoning or any other. It comes back to you with either an ordinance or a resolution with all those conditions on it. And the, the things that I have listed tonight that I think we would want to put in a conditional use would be that it would be limited to two parking spaces for camper vans that are 30 feet or less with no trailers, six parking spaces for campsites, maximum of 20 people, porta-potty or other appropriate wastewater facility, our reservations to an established reservation app, no group camping, hours of camping limitations to be determined. And that's just what I picked up through the conversation that we've had so far. We could, you know, whatever other conditions you want to put on it would be in that resolution itself, and we would draft that, and it would be in your packet before the next meeting, if you overturn the Planning Commission's appeal tonight.
Okay. And then, you may not know the answer to this. Is Chad here?
Yes.
Let, let me ask Chad. Is Bayori Park open 24 hours?
Yeah, oh, no, it's, they close at 10 each night.
10 till 6? 6:00 in the morning?
Yeah.
6:00 in the morning?
6:30 a.m. to 10 p.m.
And so, the bathrooms closed during those hours as well?
No.
It's not locked?
They stay open.
They don't lock the bathroom?
No. Now, one thing I want to add to all this is usually in the winter, we usually shut those bathrooms down.
Shut the water down?
Well, we shut the bathrooms down.
Close them and lock them.
On the cold weather, you know, December through February, we'll just shut it down because, keep the doors, I mean, we can shut the doors and keep the heat on, but we have a lot of problems out there that, you know, people like to put the door open and then all the hot air's going out. So, we just, in the past, we'll, we'll try to keep it open according to weather. But if we get, like we got last year, it was, it was shut down for over a month, I know.
Yeah.
So, that'd be something to think about, too.
It would, it would be technically a violation of the ordinance to be in a city park after 10 p.m.
Which I don't know how they would get there in the dark.
Yeah.
You know.
Quite a distance.
And it's not just that restroom. It's, it's, it's all of them.
Yeah. We, we try to keep the main ones open, you know, in the winter, the Shiloh, the, the trailheads. We try to keep them open because we know there's people using them. But most of our parks, when it's 10, 20 degrees, no one's out doing anything. So, we'll shut them down until we get warmer weather.
Can you put that in? The people that are planning to use the app, can you put that in that after 10 p.m. that they're not allowed to be using the restroom in, in the park?
Absolutely. Any rules that I need to set, I can, I can put on the booking, on the booking platform, and they, they have to agree to them when they book.
Zach, how close are the campsites to these individuals' private property?
The, the main camp area, if, when measuring from the main camp area to Dodd, the closest Dodd property is 1,000 feet. Up the mountain on the eastern border, that dwelling is approximately 800 feet up the mountain.
Do you have anything that indicates where your property limits are? And do you have anything that you're proposing to these campers, the limits of your property?
My, my plan is to write those into the rules and also to mark where Butterfield Trail comes on to my property, some sort of a signage there that says, "Entering the campground", so that, so that campers would know when they're on the property and off the property. There is a, a lot of fencing that still exists. It's the entire, my entire property isn't fenced, but there is still a lot of fencing that does exist.
So, again, Patsy, if something happens and there's, there's problems, we can revisit this. So, let's say we're getting police reports or neighbor complaints that are checked out, and there's issues. We can revisit this.
Right, that, that is part of the, of the process for a conditional use on appeal. It can be brought back for review by the Planning Commission, by anyone that's affected by it at any time. Have to come in and file that complaint in my office. We schedule a public meeting, goes to the next Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission has to determine if action needs to be taken.
That's only with conditional use.
Only conditional uses. Anything that's listed as a conditional use on appeal in any zoning classification, not just this campground, everything's handled the same way. Use Carlite and C2, those are some of the other things we do conditional uses with as well.
Thank you.
You're sure welcome to ask a question. Would you go back, I hate to ask you, but would you go back up to the microphone? Because we have, this is being broadcast also, so.
Our property on Dodd, from Dodd to back to Zach's property, is 1,099 feet, and it's 160 feet wide. So, we're not always going to be back there to police everybody. That's, you know, that's our property. We expect our neighbors to also police their own property, which his is much narrower along all, all of ours. My question is, who's going to do that policing to keep people off of my property? Because that would mean I would have to become the police and go back there constantly checking it out to make sure people aren't there. So, I'm just wondering who's going to be responsible for that.
I really love the idea of camping. I'm a, I'm a camper myself. I feel the bathrooms are, are my kind of stuck point on this. You know, sanitation is a big deal. And, you know, I boondock myself, so I know exactly what you're talking about. But, but typically, it is not in a SF2. So, I move for a motion to deny the appeal.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to-
I still had a question.
Deny, yeah, we'll, we'll, any other, yeah, go ahead.
Patsy, again, I'm sorry. So, we have, and the, I don't know what they call it. Used to be Magnolia on Huntsville.
Correct, we have that.
We did a conditional use there, correct?
For, for plumping. Two tents that were put up there, uh-huh.
Two tents?
Two tents, uh-huh.
Okay.
And they had them up there for at least one year. I don't know, they haven't been there in a while, but yes, we did it once before.
So, that was a conditional use?
It was a conditional use as well.
And what, do you remember any of the conditions we placed on that off the top of your head?
They had to have parking spaces, which they had. Those had power to them. They were a little bit different, kind of, they weren't primitive, you know.
What were they using for restrooms?
Probably Magnolia Gardens itself.
Was that a condition, do you remember, or not?
Because it was on the site there. I don't think that was, that was an issue as far as those were concerned, no. I have a question about a negative motion. The motion was to deny the appeal. Does that mean?
That's what Ernest always wants us to do.
Well, it, it, the motion is to deny the appeal or to uphold the Planning Commission's decision.
Okay.
If that fails, then they're left with what to do next.
Does that mean, okay, that's why I'm asking. If that doesn't pass, does that mean the conditional use is approved? That's my question.
It's approved, it means that they're left with-
It means we're back to-
We're back to start again, okay.
I want to make sure everybody knew that.
What now?
If the motion to deny fails, then we're still dealing.
Then, then can somebody make a motion after that?
Sure.
We'll, we would cross that bridge if we can.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments or questions? Yes, go ahead, John.
My, my name is Chuck Haley. I live up there at 2,500 Dodd Avenue. I'm trying to follow some of this as it's, as it's happening. Something happened that, that I didn't really know about. But this fellow here got up here and said that he was, you're the park guy?
Yeah.
And was talking about the Bayori restrooms. And they shut down, they shut down for, during the winter, and I understand why. But that, you know, not having that restroom for that campground there, that's, that's like no restroom facilities other than the, other than the, the Plan B situation. So, did I understand that correctly? Is that, is that what's come to light here? That, that the, that the restroom is not available part of the year?
Correct.
Okay. And so, therefore, if we-
I think it's conditional on weather, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't sound like we have, Chuck, it doesn't sound like we have a set time, but conditioned upon the weather, yeah.
Okay. So, so it sounds like the, one of the biggest issues is the sanitation issue, and that would probably have to be fairly well-resolved without, probably without changing the Bayori schedule. Is that, is that the way I see?
Let me just speak for me, Chuck. And I know this is, a lot of people are going to disagree with this, but whether I'm for or against this is, I'm setting that aside for a minute. But the restroom at Bayori, to me, is not a big deal one way or the other. I believe that when people camp this way, they are prepared to take care of that business their own way. I've been to Canada, I've canoed into Canada, where you have to do certain things, and I know what those things are, and I, and I think, this is just my opinion, but if I was camping up there, I probably wouldn't walk to Bayori restroom.
Yeah.
Okay?
I prob, I probably wouldn't either.
Yeah.
And I think that's what Ramona is kind of concerned about, is, is somebody not necessarily going too far from the campground, but maybe getting off the campground.
Okay, any other comments? Yes, Zach?
Just real quick, it, it sounds like it's such a hangup. I, I just moved to say that why don't we, why don't we put Patsy in there that I would agree to do a, a porta-potty service? A porta-potty service that solves all of those problems?
Okay. So, we would add, well, we've, we've still got to act on the-
The motion.
On the motion before us, that we have a motion and a second to deny, correct?
Correct.
So, if there's no other comments on that, and if the council doesn't have any more questions, then I'll ask for us to call a roll on that motion.
Williams?
No.
Watson?
No.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
No.
Flores? Harriman?
Yes.
Fugeroos?
Yes.
Powell?
Powell.
Fails three to five. So, that leaves the council with the decision on how to handle the request for the conditional use.
Give us some options, Ernest. Give us some, is this something?
I'll, I'll be honest with you. Normally, in a conditional use, you have before you a site- I'll, I'll be honest with you, normally in a conditional use, you have before you a site plan. And I didn't see a site plan in the materials, so just for clarification, not only for me and for the council, but for, for anyone who may be interested, it would be helpful to have a site plan with the conditions that the applicant is proposing.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we table this until we have such a thing.
And, and just to be clear, the site plan and every detail that we discussed here that we made August that we would report. I think what we got right now is a mess.
I, I think with that site plan, it would be really helpful if, if Zach, if you work with our planning department and you take input, the input you've gotten, and let's have that kind of nailed down at least as far as what we would be considering.
Okay, so are you asking me to come back with a resolution with the conditions I listed and a site plan?
No, we're asking him to come back with the site plan.
Okay.
The county and council has the authority to add certain conditions if, if they so choose, if they're not listed.
I just, I just think it would be helpful to the council if we at least had some of these things that have been talked about down in front of us.
Okay, okay. The site plan we had at Planning Commission is not the same one because it had the addition sites on it. So you want a revised site plan with an outline of these things that we talked about.
That we can get in the packet, so, so when anybody looks at the packet before the next meeting, they can see them.
With proposed conditions like, that we basically heard tonight.
Okay. And then if-
Not from you though, Patsy, that's-
I understand, I understand. But if the Planning Commission, I mean, if the council overturns the Planning Commission's decision and approves that conditional use, then we're waiting two more weeks to come back with a resolution. That's why I'm asking. So that's what you want to happen?
I think for clarity for the folks that are here, to do, take the, the motion to table, is that to the next meeting?
Yes.
Which we're not exactly sure when that's going to be.
Okay, could it be to, a motion to take that to committee meeting on Monday night? Where you have all that information Monday night, and then it goes back to the next Planning Commission, so we're not taking two more meetings? Is that possibility?
Can we do that, Ernest?
You can refer, you do have the authority to refer back to Planning Commission.
No, no, she's saying-
No, I'm, I'm talking about council committee meeting Monday night.
She said, she said council committee then Planning Commission.
No, no, I didn't, I, I meant, code, council committee meeting Monday night with the conditions and the site plan.
I think whichever side of this you're on, I think, I think the quicker we can come to a resolution one way or the other.
And then it, then it would come back to the council at the next council meeting.
So, so can I ask that it be tabled and referred back to committee?
Just so these folks know when it's going to be discussed is the main thing.
Yeah, refer it back to committee, tabled and referred back to committee.
So for those of you who, you would be committee meeting, if, if that motion is made and seconded and if the, if the council approves that motion, it would come back to committee next Monday night in the same place? At five thirty, yeah, it starts at five thirty. And then depending on what the committee does, the committee can, can pass it on to council or not. And in that case, if they pass it on to council, then I, I'm going to say it would be two weeks from tonight, but it won't be two weeks from tonight because the council has to make a decision later tonight. We're going to have to move that council meeting, hopefully just one day. But anyway, it would be week after next, before the final decision was made, if it's formed in from committee.
So the motion that is, Mr. Watson has made is to table it to the committee meeting next Monday, October the eighteenth at five thirty.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, to table or to refer it back to committee? What are we doing?
Table and refer.
Whichever one you want to use, just so they know when it is tabled.
And refer.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams? Yes.
Carries eight zero.
And then by next Monday at committee, whatever decision the council makes, if it ends up going, being referred back to the full council, then you'll know what night that is. But it'll be sometime the following week, week after next, if that, if it goes that far.
I will be out, we will be out of town, can we nail something?
Absolutely, and, and you'll know, how do we post? We post the committee agendas the same way as with the, Colby, do you know, do they get? I mean, if we've got all, if we've got the information from, from Zach that he wants to include as far as-
New Thursday.
Restrictions, it'll go out in the, in the, in the committee agenda late Thursday or early Friday.
Typically, our deadline is Thursday.
Yeah, I know.
So we will, we will put whatever items are added to that in, in the packet.
So Zach, you'll need to kind of get on it and get it to our office in time for it to go out in the committee packet. And how do they, how do the, how do the residents access the committee packet?
On the website, the easiest way to get there is to search Agenda Center, and it'll take you to all of our agendas. And the next one will be for the committee meeting, and you'll find all the information in the packet there.
And that's the committee of the hall?
That's-
Not to any specific council, it's committee of the hall?
We'll call it committee of the hall. Okay. All right, well, thank you all for being here, and I'm sorry that, for everybody that has got a, we, we kind of kicked the can down the road, but it was probably the right thing to do so we could all be, everybody could have, have better clarity. Okay? Item nine is Finance Committee and Chairman Jeff Watson, Jeff?
Finance Committee met and, and referred two items, two resolutions to council. First resolution is nine A, it has to do with settlement of condemnation lawsuit. Title to that resolution is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle a condemnation lawsuit wherein Lindsay Coria is defendant, project number one-eight B P S one-two track twenty-three. This settlement was, or this resolution settlement was forwarded to council by the committee and with recommendation for approval.
I move that the resolution pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Is there anyone that needs to speak to this item? Any questions for Steve? Okay, no further questions, I'll call for the vote.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams? Yes. Watson?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Thank you.
The second resolution is also forwarded from the committee with recommendation for approval. It has to do with authorizing the update to the 2015 Downtown Master Plan. I'd ask either Patsy or the mayor or somebody to, to give just a brief explanation, but the title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing an update to the 2015 Downtown Master Plan, acceptance of grant funds to support the update and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a contract for consulting services with H3 Studio and a memorandum with the Downtown Springdale Alliance Public Outreach and Involvement.
Very simply, we adopted the plan in 2015, a lot has happened in the downtown. We're asking to update that plan. We have been offered a grant from the Walton Family Foundation for a third of the cost of the plan update. The Tyson Foundation has offered the other third, and the city would be responsible for a thirty, a third of that plus one dollar. So it's thirty-three, thirty-three, and thirty-four to make the hundred thousand dollars for a contract to H3. And then an additional thirty thousand dollar grant from the Walton Family Foundation for an enhanced community involvement program to make sure that we get our diverse community involved, being able to translate materials and information to Hispanic and marshalleys and to hold public meetings to encourage as much involvement as we can get. Simply, that's what it is.
I'll make a motion, the resolution passed.
Second.
And where's, where's the thirty thousand coming from? What, is it coming from the general fund? What's it coming from?
Coming from general operation fund is what we proposed, yes.
General fund reserves, yes.
Yes.
Or undesignated general fund. Okay, any other questions? Right, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams? Yes. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next few items belong, I, I believe, to our city attorney, so Ernest?
Thank you. Item ten is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring emergency. This is fifteen oh-two B North Pleasant.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance passed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Anyone need to speak to this, anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams? Yes. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
With the merch clause being adopted.
Thank you.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams? Yes. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero. Next item is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring emergency. This one's actually in Benton County, that's why it's a separate ordinance, twenty-nine thirteen Rowan Place is the address.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance passed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams? Yes. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Merch clause being adopted.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams? Yes. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero. Next item is an ordinance calling for the annexation of surrounded land pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash forty dash five oh-one at SEC. In your packet, you'll see on page seventy-three is a map. It's a rather large area. I know we've talked about this before. There's a lot of development in that portion of the city. There is, there are fifty-five different tracts of land. What this ordinance would do would then set in, in process the possible annexation of the surrounded land. Would, it would require each of the property owners to be notified via certified mail of the public hearing, which this would set the public hearing for November the twenty-third. City clerk would also publish notice of the public hearing in advance of the public hearing. Uh, if you'll notice, this, uh, large island is surrounded completely by Springdale and Fayetteville. And Springdale has the greater area of distance around the island, which by law allows the city of Springdale to annex the entire area.
Is that a new law or is that the way it's always been?
They actually changed that law, uh, I don't know if it was eight years ago or ten years ago. It used to, it used to be, had to be surrounded by one city, but there, uh, might have been actually longer ago than that because I remember we did a rather large island annexation, I think it was in two thousand and ten.
It was at least eight or ten years ago.
Yeah, we had some that were completely surrounded by Springdale and Johnson, for example. And we had some were completely surrounded by Springdale and Tawny Town.
We did that big one up north, remember? We had to take it all by ordinance because we surrounded it up around. And, and then we ended up giving some back to Lowell, giving some back to Cave Springs, areas that made sense. But, but we were the only ones who could do it by ordinance because of that law.
It's just the majority of the property is surrounded by one city.
Right.
Yeah, the, the way the statute reads, it's the municipality, the municipality with the greater area of distance adjoining the island gets to annex.
Uh huh. And, uh, but don't you remember that one where the, all the fellow had the Vs or-
I do.
Something, and there was some problem with us not being able to do it with him.
He's still in, he's still in the camp.
On South Powell Street.
Right. Why didn't it work there?
I think that might have been before the law changed and we just never went back and-
Never had gone back to do it.
Oh, maybe we need to explore that one.
Because at that time, he was, he was not very happy with the city at that time.
So this is currently Washington County?
Yes, all of this is currently in, in the county. And we, and if you'll remember, we, we actually did one, a couple of smaller island annexations. We did the, uh, the roundabout at Don Tyson Parkway in Haberton. We brought those in, they were completely surrounded, they were in the county. We also did one, uh, another one. There was some thought that if you look on this map, parcels, there's like eight or ten parcels there on the east side that we thought might have been an island in and of themselves, uh, but they weren't. So, uh, decision was made to go ahead and, and it makes sense because for county to provide services, they have to go through either Fayetteville or Springdale to get to these particular properties. And like, and as I mentioned, each of these individual property owners will receive notice. They, actually they'll receive a copy of the ordinance if it passes tonight. But you pass, they'll receive a copy of the ordinance, they'll receive a copy of the map. And they'll also be advised of the time and place of the public hearing, and they'll be welcome to come and comment at that time.
Move that the ordinance passed.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Williams? Yes. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carries eight zero. Last one's a little bit easier. It's a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon a portion of utilities meant to the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. Would also set the hearing date on that to be November twenty-third.
Move resolution pass.
Okay, motion and second to approve. Roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams? Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Okay, thank you. Item fourteen, we put this on the agenda so we'd be sure and address it tonight. The regular, next regular city council meeting date would be October twenty-sixth, Tuesday. Many, if not all of us are going to, are going on the trip to Washington, D.C. Uh, we're supposed to arrive, be flying home that night. So we need to discuss when we want to move that meeting to, what date we want to. Uh, I'd, I'd let, just to start the ball rolling, I'd suggest we just do it the next night, October twenty-seventh, on a Wednesday night. Okay?
So moved.
I know you won't be back. Is anyone else going to be out of town that they know of on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh?
I possibly could be, but I don't know yet.
Okay. Okay.
So we'll have Zoom available, they'll be right-
Sounds like we'd have, it sounds like we might, we, we should have at least six unless somebody's plans change. Yeah, we, there'll be a lot on it. Uh, you'll know after committee next week, there'll be a lot on it. Yeah.
As long as Zoom's available.
We can, we can certainly have Zoom available. So if you're not where you can, Kevin, that might-
Would Thursday be better for these people or acting like they might not make it back or, or it's not making difference, Kevin?
Well, I'll be out that whole week.
The whole week.
Kevin's going to stay over and be gone the whole week, but, but you may be able to Zoom. So, so we can, we can get it done, if y'all want to do it that Wednesday. That's, that's your motion, Jeff?
Yep.
Second.
And a second, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?[1768.24]